Good evening, I'm calling the Monday, July 23rd, 2018 Planning Commission Meeting to Order. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, like our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, first docket on the agenda tonight is the approval of tonight's agenda. Do I have any requests for changes? Entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
I have a move from Commissioner Higgins. Do I have a second?
Yes, a second then.
A second from Commissioner De Sanctus. All those in favor who approve the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the agenda's approved. Moving on, approval of the minutes from the Planning Commission meeting held Monday, July 9th, 2018. Do I have any requests for edits or concerns? All right, entertain a motion to approve. So moved. Here I have a move from Commissioner Farr. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Mehdi. All those in favor approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the minutes from Monday, July 9th are approved. Moving on, the first item, the next item on the agenda tonight is an informational meeting. It's Abra Auto Body and Glass, location 13045, 13075, and 13105 Pioneer Trail. A request for a guide plan change from community commercial to industrial on 2.98 acres. Zoning district change from CCOM to I-2 on 2.98 acres. Site plan review on 2.98 acres. Preliminary plat of three lots into one lot on 2.98 acres. This is an informational meeting, informational review. Julie, would you like to start us off on this?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, as stated, this is an informational meeting rather than a public hearing, as is typically before you. Due to a change in publication timelines related to the holiday, the notice for public hearing was not satisfactorily met, so we are discussing this item this evening as an informational item, which will allow the commission to ask any questions that it may have of the applicant or staff related to the project, and also to request any additional information that the commission may wish to see. I would ask that the commission refrain from weighing in on whether or not they support the project, or how they may tend to vote due to the fact that there will be a formal public hearing on August 13th, and those kind of comments, of course, should take into account all of the public testimony that may come out through this discussion or through discussion on the 13th. So with that, I'll just move into an overview of the project. The property is currently guided and zoned for community commercial. If you'll recall, probably about two years ago, there was an approval for a project called Cal Point, which included a grocery store with a drive-through, as well as a multi-tenant retail building on a portion of the site. Prior to that, in I believe 2006, 2007, there was approval for a different commercial project that went through the process and was approved by the city. Both of those commercial projects, obviously, have not been constructed. Prior to those approvals, the property was guided industrial, so this request before you this evening essentially reverts back to that industrial guiding. The project includes the construction of approximately an 18,000-square-foot Abra auto body and glass store or facility. The building does meet the Class 1 and Class 2 materials as proposed. The parking requirements for the use are also met on the site. The landscaping is providing a variety of coniferous deciduous, as well as shrubs and perennials within the site. There are a few changes to the landscaping plan that staff is requesting prior to city council review. They are fairly minor in nature. One is adding landscaping material to one of the parking lot islands that was not included in the original plan, and also adding some perennials or grasses or shrubs along the exterior of the fencing that is provided on the site in order to break up that linear view of the fence. In addition, there is a pedestrian connection provided from the front door of the use out to Pioneer Trail right-of-way. There is not currently a sidewalk there today, but staff is requesting that the pedestrian connection be shown on the plans in order to provide that connection in the future for when Pioneer Trail is improved. That design, of course, is not yet complete, so staff is requesting that a 10-foot easement be provided along with the plat in order to reserve the opportunity for providing that connection dependent upon the ultimate design of Pioneer Trail. The site also provides foreign access to the MAC property, or the Metropolitan Airport's Commission property, to the south. If you'll recall, there's a couple acres down there that are currently used as the community gardens, but those are owned by MAC. They have been rezoned to airport office, and MAC is marketing those properties. They've been marketing those properties for a couple of years, but as a part of this project, just like the Cal Point project prior to this one, we want to reserve the opportunity to provide access to that property for the time at which it does develop. So that is shown on the plans. There will need to be a few modifications as well to that. For instance, the access is shown, but it doesn't include the full radii, so we're continuing to work with the applicant in order to make sure that the radii of that connection doesn't pose any problems with utilities or sign locations or things of that sort. Otherwise, the plan does comply with all of the performance standards required by city code. No waivers are being requested. In fact, a PUD is not being requested on this property, so it is typical that sometimes, excuse me, the Planning Commission reviews requests that includes waivers. There are no waivers included with this request. The development also includes sustainability features as outlined in your staff report. There's bike racks, there are LED lighting outside and inside within the building, native plantings within the landscaping plan, irrigation system that includes rain sensors, and there are also building design elements included in order to provide improved efficiencies. So I know that the applicant is available this evening and will make a brief presentation, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have following that. No formal action is being requested by the commission this evening. Feedback and conversation questions is what we're seeking.
Thank you. Will the applicant please come forward and tell us about your project? Good evening. If you would, would you state your name for the record and spell it, please?
Yes, my name is Paul Tuccci, T-U-C-C-I. I'm with Apodan Incorporated. We are the applicant, and we will be, if approved, the developer of the project. As Julie said, I think I'd like to keep this rather short and answer questions that come up. I think that's going to be more efficient. The, there is a facility in town for Abra. In fact, it's just up the street, thank you Julie, it's just up the street to the north, but it is a facility that has been there a fair amount of time, and they have reworked and are starting to roll out a new prototype. Give you a sense of size, the building up the street is about half of the size of what we're proposing. All new equipment in the one we're proposing, a little just more efficient to meet the demands of the area. This is something that's going on not only in Eden Prairie, but in other communities around the cities here and around the country. We are working on approximately 20 locations for them at this time. The site plan that you see before you, and I hope this works, I'm just going to kind of go through some things quick, is a result of a number of meetings with staff. We've talked about layout of the building to not impede on surrounding residential properties, to make it work functionally for our tenant, but also to integrate it into the entire area that we have. As Julie mentioned earlier, we are working and continue to work with trail connections and that driveway connection to the property adjacent to us that MAC owns. One of the things that, I seem to be stuck. One of the things that we have done, and not quite your words.
I can go over.
We typically use approximately two acres of land to get this on. Some places were a little bit bigger, some were a little smaller. The building is always 18,000 feet, that is the prototype. The parking is designed, if you'll notice on your site plan, the parking is designed to be, it has a limited amount of parking for customers because typically when you're a customer, you're leaving your car. But there are people who will drive in, they will ask, unfortunately, I just had to do this last week when my wife and daughter got rear-ended. We drove in and they'll have somebody come out, or they'll pull you into the first bay and they'll give you a quick estimate. But typically, it's a drop-off or pickup situation. Somebody's driving, waiting for the person to drop the car, and then they move on. The majority of the parking is in an area that is behind a fence, and you can see in front of you, this is a sample of the fence. It's a maintenance-free vinyl fence. When we started out on this project, on all of their projects, they wanted to do chain-link fence, and we kind of said, yeah, that sounds really nice, but it's not going to fly. In almost every community we go to, we're going to need to have something a little more upgraded. They need the fence for a couple of reasons. The insurance companies require security of the cars as they're either waiting to be repaired or waiting to be picked up by a client. Typically, our fence is eight feet high. However, the city only allows a seven-foot fence, so we have lowered it by a foot to meet that requirement. But there, approximately 80% of the stalls on the site are inside that fence. The green space and landscaping, again, we've worked with staff on this, and we are meeting all of the requirements. The building design, this is an upgrade. Their prototypical building is rock face block. These are integral color block, they're not painted, and they use EPHIS, but we, in order to meet the building material requirements, we've modified our elevations as you see in front of you. The construction time start to finish is about five and a half to six months from start to open. It's a pretty, nothing's easy to build, but this is pretty simple. You have about 2,000 feet of this is office space, and the balance of it is shop space. One of the key things that we do is, whoop, sorry Julie, I think, thank you. One of the things that happens in the operation is, this is a little different than a retail use, or maybe a Goodyear, or somebody like that. You know, the typical hours are 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. They're, in some cases, they close at 6:00. I believe the store in Chan-Hassan closes at 6:00. They are, I think, going to expand that. One of the things that happens in this, that will happen in the new prototype, is that all the work happens inside the building. This isn't a garage door swung open. The shop space is climate-conditioned for summer, so you don't have the extreme heat building up in there. There's two high-velocity fans in there to keep air moving, that helps keep that cool. So the doors will come down to make that space continue to be climate-conditioned. Little different than if you go to Firestone or one of those, and you hear an air wrench go off about every minute or so, it gets a little annoying. We're trying to eliminate that. The cars that are in the lot, there will be a time, you know, we say that all work is done inside, and I would say it's 99.8%. There will be a couple of times where they need to move a car in, fender may be bent, somebody might go out there with a hammer and hit it, so you know, I make sure I say that to everybody that were in front of that. There will be times where that happens, but the majority of the work is done inside. In doing that, they usually run 100 to 120 cars a month in there. Again, different cities, different locations, will be higher or lower, but typical store runs about that. 75 to 80% of those vehicles come in on their own, 20 to 25% are towed in because the damage is extreme. They do not do any engine work, they're not doing axle work, things like that. This is body and glass. They do paint. The paint booth has its own air purification system and makeup air system that's part of the booth itself, so one of the sustainability things is, it helps eliminate the odors coming out of it. You're not going to smell paint being kicked out of the paint booths. Just an idea, a typical store, thank you Julie, has 12 to 20 employees in it, from a general manager all the way down to reception at the front and techs in the back. You see some of the hourly wage rates from $15 to $20 to start. There are bonuses for both performance and longevity, good medical, dental, 401K plans. We put that in so you know that this is a, these are good jobs, and one of the things that they struggle with right now is finding good employees. They have a learning center down in Eagan, and they are constantly looking for new talent in that. Last thing I'll hit on real quick is, just to give you some idea, an average store does $4 million to $4.5 million. We try to put that on a per-car, and on a per-car basis, it's about $2,200 per car. But again, each store is a little different depending on the amount of damage coming in. Again, I think if you compare this to what, when we're done, what is in the city today, this will be dramatically different. I think the biggest thing is, the, we have, there's a perception of this use, and we've had this conversation across the country, east coast to west coast, that the old auto body dealers, when you drive by and you see the car without a bumper sitting there, and it drives residents, folks in your position, and other people crazy to see that. The whole idea of that fence in the back is, the cars are there. And while they're waiting to get in, they might have a fender that they do, and they're waiting for the front bumper, and you'll see a car with one fender and no bumper sitting out there. You're not going to see that because those cars will be behind the fence. The parking in front is only for customers coming in and out. The last thing we put in, and just make sure that everyone knows, is about 38% of the volume is in taxable transactions. Doesn't matter, I actually live in Eden Prairie, so it doesn't matter. In our community, we don't have a city sales tax, but when we go around the country, that is a big factor, so we just point that out to people. Again, you can see the materials in front of us, a variety of materials. We worked with staff to make sure that we didn't need waivers on building landscape requirements. We're doing a lot of things with stormwater quality, stormwater management. We've worked with both engineering and planning, and we think we have a pretty solid plan. So with that, I would love to field any questions you have.
Thank you. Any initial questions from the commissioners? Commissioner De Sanctus?
Paul? Damage cars are notorious for leaking fluids, even though that is not the focus of your operation. What provisions are you making for mitigating and storing hazardous waste and disposal of hazardous waste on the premises directly?
Yes. If, if in the original accident, a lot of times, the car doesn't show up there for some period of time, and if there is a leak, they try to mitigate that with oil pans underneath, I forget the name of the actual piece of equipment they'll put under. We do have oil-water separators in the systems to make sure that we trap it, it doesn't get into the system. But again, if a car is that damaged where the engine is leaking, typically, it's going to go in for mechanical work first, and then come back for the body work. So that issue is handled by, again, somebody like a Goodyear or a Firestone who's dealing with it before the car would go to Abra. But they do mitigate with making sure that they collect anything that comes on the ground. There is oil-water separators that they're working that stuff into.
When I talk about storage, though, I'm referring to, for example, paint products and any petroleum distillates associated with the paint products.
Okay, the paint is all stored, if, Julie, do you have the floor plan? I can, actually, I can put it up on the screen. I think I will walk over to the other. Paint booth area is right in this area. This is the paint booth, this is the spray deck. The mix room is where they hold all of the materials. They have a rack system and an inventory system that makes sure that they move everything. It's in a rack, it's not being, to move it, it's being integrated into their paint system by the technician, so it's not somebody carrying it through the entire length of the shop. As far as their handling of empty paint cans, they do have a service that handles all the solvents. And again, it depends on which type of paint booth they're using, water-based or oil-based paints, but it typically is stored, handled in that mix room, and then it's moved into the spray booth by them. The prep deck is not anywhere where the paint is at, and all the solvents are in there.
Commissioner Farr?
Just to make sure I have everything, apologize if maybe my packet got short. There was talk about exterior materials. I didn't get any exterior elevations. Is that part of our packet? Did anybody else get those? Nobody got those, okay. Is that something that we have a graphic of that we can, maybe have you walk through?
The building is a mix of brick, glass, CMU, EPHIS, and the coping at the top. The, there's brick banding, it's hard, trying to watch over my shoulder here, it's interesting. You have a predominance of the rock face in the areas that are, the white, if you can see the materials, I can kind of slip a materials plan in there too. You have brick base going around EPHIS, at, as they call it, the cube area here and here, that's the main storefronts. Again, you got the bricks running low, some banding to break this up. So the predominance is brick block, EPHIS, EPHIS in this area, here, 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 brick down here, metal doors. We did change the color of the doors, they used to be orange, and again, we thought that was a little obtrusive. So it's a pretty clean look, and this is, the elevation that you're looking at today here is the result of, I think, two or three meetings with staff and getting feedback and making sure that we met the requirements for material types and amounts, so we didn't have to ask for any type of variance. Again, their prototypical building is painted block, and I can tell you that we're doing 20 of these, and so far, we're 0 for 20 on getting the prototype done. It's just not something that's being accepted in communities where we're a little more visible. We're not in an industrial park.
Thanks for doing that. Could you put that graphic back up there one more moment for us? Okay, so I'm noticing you have a little slightly taller parapet in what I'll call the north elevation, the top elevation. Is that what I'm seeing there?
Right here?
Yes, especially in the middle.
Yeah.
So facing the neighbors, facing north.
Yeah.
So that any rooftop units might be screened from their view, and along Pioneer Trail, it looks like it's a little lower elevation.
Right.
And still from there, would you be offering some rooftop screening for any HVC units that you have on the roof?
Yeah, we typically try to place them in the middle, so that the building itself, as you're walking, will screen it. But if we need to look at some rooftop screening around the units, we can accommodate that.
Okay. If that would be your strategy, maybe when you come back, a cross-sectional view to demonstrate that the angle works for you, something like that? And I'm just seeing overhead doors then facing Pioneer Trail, not facing the residential area on the north side. There's no drive-through of your vehicles once they're done.
No, no, again, I can go, I should have kept the floor plan over here.
Yeah.
The movement is in and out through here, and then if you notice, this is the rear of the building, there is a door there. So I am going to grab the floor plan, I apologize for running back and forth, because I think the story is told better with the floor plan.
Okay.
One other thing I will point out when we, when we do is, I will set that there. So the overhead doors are these doors right here. The fence that we talked about, the fence comes from this point out and over. So you, if you're a customer coming in, your only access is into that first estimating bay.
Mm-hmm.
These bays, you could come in, but you either have to come back out that bay, or, and this doesn't happen, because these are the techs taking it through, you can come all the way through the building and out the rear door, but it's not a straight-through shot.
Okay. So what's the point of having all that asphalt along the north wall facing residential on the site plan?
It's for, when you have the wreckers coming in and out, it gives them a secondary access out, so you don't have too many turns inside, especially if you have a number of cars in there.
Oh, okay, all right.
Circulation, but again, that's all inside the fence.
Sure, okay. I thought the gate down that north was labeled to have a fireman's box lock.
Well, it will be to allow fire to get through there too, to circulate.
Okay, but you can use it as well. It's not exclusive for the fire department. You're going to be using it.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Other questions? Other question, did you, did you have any community engagement or hear from anyone on your Shagley Lane, or maybe the city or you? Did you hear anything?
We have not.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, we did send out public hearing notices for this evening. I have received one call from a gentleman. I called and answered his questions, and I believe that is all of the communication that we've received. We will be sending out another public hearing notice for the August 13th meeting in order to meet the notification requirements, so folks will have the opportunity to come and speak at that meeting as well, or call us with questions in the meantime.
Okay, good. Paul? Commissioner Mehdi?
Paul, I'm wondering if you could actually pass those up here. I'd love to take a close look in the material examples, if we could pass them around. And then I actually have one question for Julie. I kind of missed in your introduction, Julie, what you said, the site directly to the south, that's owned by the Airport Commission, what that is planned to be or may be down the road?
So the property just south of this that is owned by MAC is currently zoned airport office. So back in 2013, 2014, there were two new zoning districts created, one called airport office, one called airport commercial, in order to address those properties that MAC was looking at development opportunities on. So this property was zoned for airport office. So there's not a specific site plan that was approved as part of that zoning. Zoning only was established with the understanding that if and when a user is identified, that they'd be coming through the formal city process in order to gain site plan approval or PUD approval, whatever would be appropriate at that point.
Do you know how many stories that zone would allow, offhand?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I misspoke. If I, I think I said airport office, I meant to say airport commercial.
Okay.
I apologize. That height restriction, I believe, is 30 feet in that zoning district, but I can certainly confirm that, and we can include that in your report on the 13th.
Yeah, I was just trying to get kind of an idea of what might be there down the road, but that's helpful. Thank you.
Commissioner Higgins?
Yes, I was interested in the irrigation system that you mentioned in your overview of the project from this material that you sent with the plans. Could you give me some sense, is this something that you've worked on in other new developments for Abra, or is it something that the site required you to focus some time on?
In our, that's a good question, I'm thinking. I don't think we've designed one without a irrigation system, and I believe everything we've done to date has rain sensors in it. Nothing jumps out at me where, I know everyone has sprinkler, and I am pretty sure everyone has rain sensors in, because most communities are making you adopt those.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Commissioner? Yes, Commissioner Farr? Two more questions. The fence location, I noticed around your
The fence location, I noticed around your parking lot, it's fairly tight to your perimeter curb line. And just for a snow removal standpoint, what do you have select areas where maybe you bump it out a little bit closer to the road, so that you can push snow and leave it on your property?
Yeah, we've been reviewing that right now. That's a very good point, and we may end up doing that. Otherwise, what typically will happen, because we've talked to them operation, they're the ones who will be doing the snow plowing.
Sure.
Is they will take those stalls that are out by the trash enclosure, and they'll not use those necessarily. That's where they'll pile snow. And if it gets excessive, then they'll haul it outside the fence and put it in one of the landscaped areas. But they like to, again, we like to try and not do too much of that, so when you get the melt, we don't want salt all over the place.
Right, okay. Another comment regarding the fence, and I don't know if this is more for you or for staff, but I noticed in the staff report, there was a comment about making some adjustment for some of the landscape islands, or at least one inside the fenced-in area. And while I think that comment is spot-on from a bird's eye view, from a public view interest, I would almost rather us, in this particular project, take all of the landscaping and shrubbery out from the fenced-in area, and instead put it along the foot of the fence around the perimeter for the benefit of the public. I don't think it's of much use to the applicant in this particular use, and it's not going to be visible from the public way. And I think this long, black fence could use a little visual buffering. So if I was king for a day, that would be my recommendation, is to relocate some of those low plantings and shrubbery from inside the fenced-in area to outside the fenced-in area to the benefit of the public. The rezoning and regiding, Julie, I think we've talked about this maybe on other projects, but we don't have a vehicle for a conditional use permit. This might have been the poster child for that, where we wouldn't have to risk maybe another future use with the I-2 zoning doing something a little less attractive than what we're seeing in front of us tonight. But it may have been easier to allow a different use in a commercial district rather than rezoning and regiding, and then ending up with an industrial district long-term.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, if I can speak to that just briefly. As you'll recall, within the last, I'm going to say, nine months to a year, the city brought forward a text amendment with regard to automotive repair, and separated those by definition of minor and major repair. And anytime there is body work that is done, that meets the definition of major. And my recollection is that major is only allowed in the industrial districts. So it's a little bit of a catch-22. I certainly understand the comment that you're making, but in order to be consistent with the new language that was recently adopted with regard to automotive repair, a rezoning to industrial was appropriate in this particular case. As you'll, or recommendation, as you'll recall in the comp plan update, this is one of the areas that we have placed a new designation or land use category on called Flex Service, and we'll talk about that a little bit more under the Aspire update. But the idea was to define and find areas in the community that are better slated for some uses than the traditional industrial areas or the golden triangle in particular. We know that these uses are appropriate within the community. There's a need, there's a demand for them. However, they may not be appropriate in all commercial districts or all industrial districts. So trying to find appropriate areas to park those, if you will, in order to maintain those uses for the community overall. So it's probably a long version to a very simple question, but...
Great perspective. Appreciate that very much. I understand. I think one of the last comments I have, Mr. Chairman, just to finish up, is the follow-up to Commissioner Mehdi's comment about the MAC property. I'm sure Engineering or Traffic's looked at that in terms of maximum density and just making sure we get the number of cars out of there at this one driveway, and that there isn't a problem with sharing or turning movements or anything like that.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the applicant did provide a trip generation report, so we have looked at that as a part of this overall project. Certainly, if and when the MAC property does develop, we'd be looking for similar information on that proposal as well, in order to make sure that all of the required elements are addressed in the plan review.
Thank you.
Other questions?
All right. Hearing none, I just wanted to just go through some of the things I picked up that we'd like to talk about next time. Sectional view of the roof screening you wanted to see, is that correct?
If they're proposing it to be unscreened without a parapet hiding the mechanical unit, I think they could demonstrate graphically that the cross-sectional view would be satisfactory.
Okay. The height requirements across the street. Some questions.
Adjacent, not across the street.
Adjacent. Some questions around the irrigation that's going to be installed. The fence line, which sounds like there's going to be some ongoing discussions, and then also, what I thought was a pretty interesting comment about maybe looking at the landscaping along the outside of the fence to the benefit of the public, so. Did I miss anything that we'd like to see included?
It'd be great to get the elevations, too, because I don't think we saw those. And electronic would be fine, too.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, we'll certainly make sure we get those elevations out to you in the report for the 13th. We would ask that you hold on to these full-size plan sets, because we won't be providing a second set for you prior to that evening. With regard to the comment with discussing landscaping and parking islands, while I can certainly understand the point of that comment, I just wanted to kind of follow up with that as well. The thought process of requiring the landscaping in those parking islands within the fenced area is in order to address if ABRA were to vacate the property and another user were to come in, if a fence were to come down, we want to make sure that those landscaping islands do include landscaping materials. And we'd want to, we'll work with the applicant to discuss the proposal this evening, but we'll have to take a look at what code talks about with regard to requirements for landscape islands and plantings being in those. There are no waivers being requested. This is not a PUD request. It was not noticed as a PUD request. So if a shift in the plans would require a waiver, then notification, it would not be met because a PUD is not being requested. So we'll continue to look at that and have some further discussions with the applicant as well.
Yeah, I don't think their intention would be to trigger a PUD.
Right, right.
Julie, I have a question. With regard to the plantings and Commissioner Farr's comment about location of plantings outside the fence, I assume this is going to be a 24-hour illumination system, LED system here. And I'm assuming that there is residential properties within site distance of this development? And have the, has the city considered the use of, say, dense evergreens along the fence to maximally block any ambient light from the project and from the ongoing operation?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, two comments on that. One, a photometric plan has been provided as a part of the application, and it does meet the code requirements of half a foot candle at the property line. In fact, I believe, if my recollection serves me correctly, they're basically at zero foot candle at the property line, because there's so much distance to the right-of-way. And in addition, staff is going to continue to work with the applicant to modify the plan in order to provide some landscaping along the exterior edge of that fence to break up those long, black linear version, or views, rather, from the fence.
Any final comments, Mr. Tucci?
No, we were excited to be here. I think the fence landscaping comment is not unique to this group. We've heard that before, and we'll work with staff to make sure we address that. And we'll be back in a few weeks, and we'll have everything hopefully wrapped up.
Great, thank you. Appreciate your presentation, and we'll see you in a few weeks. All right, moving on, this evening, we are moving to an Aspire 2040 update. Looks like two of them, special study areas and economic competitiveness. Julie, will be walking through specialist study areas?
Correct. Mr. Chair, members of the commission, so we're back, I think, for our third night to talk about the various chapters in the Aspire 2040 comp plan update. This evening, the two chapters that we're going to review for you are the special area studies, and then David Lindahl, the Economic Development Manager, will be speaking to the economic competitiveness chapter. And as we've talked about before, the intention this evening is to provide an opportunity for the commission to ask any questions that they might have on each of the specific topics. The draft plan that you have in your possession is just that. It's a draft. Staff is continuing to refine it, so we're taking a look at those grammatical errors, matching graphics with the appropriate text within the document. And we're taking a look at that throughout our team, as well as we've got some other folks looking at that as well. So this evening, we'd really like to focus on any policy types of questions or additional comments that you might have for those topics. So with the comp plan update, the city decided that we really wanted to look at a couple of areas in town that either were kind of going through a transformation on their own, or either had, you know, really maintained status quo over quite some time. And rather than just continue to look at the more bright spots within the city, wanting to look at some of these areas that maybe hadn't had a lot of attention in the past. So we're going to talk about two of those areas this evening. The first one is the Martin Drive area. So this property is bound by Highway 5 on the south, Mitchell Road on the east, and the regional bike trail on, I'm going to call it, the northwest side of the property. The, I don't, oh, my mouse will work. So this area right down here is the, what we've been calling the Venture Lane property. It's excess MinDOT right-of-way, and Mr. Lindahl might be speaking about that a little bit more in his presentation. But it is excess MinDOT right-of-way that MinDOT has expressed an interest in being able to sell. The city does have right of first refusal on that property, so the city's been engaged in conversations with MinDOT on that property as development potential. And there will be an RFP that will be going out to the development community within the next couple of months. And as I said, David may speak about that in a little bit more detail. But that piece, as well as the transformation that we're seeing in the uses down here, is what really prodded the city to take a harder look at this property or this project area with the comp plan update. So this property was developed quite some time ago. I'm going to estimate in the late '60s, early '70s. It's probably one of the older industrial areas that we have in town. So as newer industrial areas have become available, and newer, more updated facilities have become available, we've seen some of these buildings become a little bit outdated, and as such, then they transition to other uses, whether that be dance studios, martial arts, maybe some mix of retail, maybe auto repair, similar to what you've just talked about with the ABRA auto request in front of you. So it's really provided for a hodgepodge of uses within a small condensed area. So we wanted to take a look at what does this area want to be, rather than, in a proactive stance, rather than just being reactive to whatever development proposals come in front of us. We wanted to provide some vision to the development community, so they knew what the city was really looking for and expecting out of this area. So as a part of taking a look at this area, we've basically identified three functional areas of the Martin Drive study area. So in kind of, I'm going to call it pink, is the Mitchell Road frontage area. So that is largely the bakery on the corner, and then scooting a little bit north up on Mitchell Road up to the creek. Then the second functional area is the 212 frontage. So that includes the vacant Venture Lane property that we just discussed a little bit, as well as, I believe it's four or five different uses here, sandwiched between Martin Drive and 212 or Highway 5. There's a fair amount of commercial retail that is occurring within those spaces, even though all of this property is zoned industrial. So mostly it's zoned I-2. There might be a sneaky I-5 parcel that got in there, too, but largely it's zoned I-2. But there have been PUD approvals that have been given over time for some of these properties to allow an increase in retail. So with that, you're seeing a bit more of a transition of uses. And then the area that's largest in size, that's purple, is what we're calling the north side of Martin Drive, and that tends to be more industrial in nature, but still also provides a bit of a complex mix of uses by integrating some outdoor storage, possibly, some auto repair. It's not a true industrial area anymore. So that's kind of the framework that we've started with. The considerations that were reviewed through the special study area is taking a look at the market realities. What is the demand for uses recommended for the area? The uses that are there certainly serve a purpose and a need within our community, and much like we talked about with ABRA, or we touched on briefly, these uses might be more appropriate in certain areas of the community than they are in others, even though this property is zoned I-2, just like property up in the GTA is zoned I-2, or property down in Pioneer, and Pioneer is I-2. With the comp plan, we would really want to strive to provide direction of the kinds of uses, because what's good for one I-2 zone might not be appropriate for another I-2 area. So that's what has led us to the new land use category of Flex Service, and that is what is guided on the Martin Drive area, as well as down at that area that we were just talking about for Pioneer and Pioneer. Some of those uses like auto repair, important to the community, but probably not appropriate in our town center or TOD area, so we want to make sure that we still have a place for them. The next talking point for key considerations is the land use compatibility and development flexibility. So earlier on, we talked about this area really being a hodgepodge of uses. Some might view that as having its detractions, but it also has its attractions. Because of the fact that there's such a hodgepodge of uses out there, it makes it more compatible with pretty much everything across the board. You've got some residential to the north and to the east with Martin Blue. You've got the golf course. You've got some really interesting topographic and natural features with the trees along that area and the creek. So that lends itself well to potentially residential uses. You've got the visibility and the access along 5 and Mitchell Road that could lend itself well to commercial or other types of uses that really require that visibility. And then on that north side of Martin Drive, you've got area, fairly sizable area, that doesn't have that availability, or visibility, but it certainly has great access. So it's a great landing spot for some of those uses that maybe don't, you don't want front and center, and very visible, but you still want to provide quick and convenient access to. Another key consideration is the limited development and redevelopment opportunities. So what we're really talking about there is the immediate versus the long-term opportunities. So the Venture Lane site, for instance, is immediate. It's a vacant property. We have an opportunity to work with MinDOT to possibly influence some development through the RFP process on that property. Long-range opportunities would exist largely on that area north of Martin Drive, where you've got a lot of different parcels that in order to really do a transformational redevelopment, you'd have to do some parcel assembly. And you all know that that can be challenging. Or in the case of the Mitchell Road frontage area, any transformational change over there would likely require not only assembly of properties, but also relocation of existing businesses. And, you know, as market conditions change, that may or may not happen, but the city wanted to be situated that, in the event that that did happen, what do we want this property to be in the long term? And then also talking about retail centers and serving neighborhoods. So while this area is functioning as a mix of industrial and commercial right now, what we certainly don't want to do is detract from those commercial areas that we already have in town, whether that's the area around Eden Prairie Mall, or the area around the TOD stations, where we're going to see some probably increase in commercial activity, or in other neighborhood areas, whether that's 4 and 5, or up at 62, where there are other areas. We don't want to detract and compete with those. So commercial activity in this area or retail services are really intended to provide neighborhood services for those residents who either live there now, or may live there in the future, if there are some redevelopment opportunities and changes in use. And if you have questions at any time, just pop right in. So out of looking at those key considerations and the market conditions, there were some improvement recommendations that were... improvement recommendations that were drafted as a part of this plan. And in the plan, there is, you see a graphic there of the improvement plan that really tries to show the physical improvements. The improvements that are recommended operate both at a high level and a site-specific level. So some of those recommendations are going to talk about pedestrian connections, sidewalks on certain streets, improving crosswalks, reconfiguring a street cross-section. Those are going to be really site-specific. But then some of them are a little more high-level with regard to that first bullet point of zoning flexibility. So addressing performance standards such as the I-2 zone right now has a minimum lot size of two acres. So taking a look at, does that make sense in this particular area? Or should an implementation strategy of Aspire be creating a zoning district that really gets to that flex service area that we're trying to achieve here and along Pioneer Trail, so that we don't have properties that are in non-conforming status? Some of the other more aesthetic improvements that were recommended included providing some type of gathering spot down in this area. So right here is the prop shop. This area is a large drainage retention area that Mindot has for its roadway system. So maybe there's an opportunity to work with Mindot to create some kind of seating area, whether that's a bench, picnic table benches, something like that, for the employees in that area to be able to walk on a trail, congregate by a natural area and enjoy their lunch or break time. Another aesthetic improvement is the screening of the power substation. So as you know, this is the substation right up in this area. As you come down Venture Lane, it's very, very visible. I expect that that's something we'll be talking about in more detail with the potential development of the Venture Lane site. What can we do to help improve that situation? Also, remembering to take a look at transit opportunities, whether that's talking with Southwest Transit about including any planned bus stops in this area as either employment numbers start to creep up or residential numbers start to grow in this area with redevelopment as well. And then one of the, the last item on the list is this intersection here at Venture Lane and taking a look at making sure that that is a safe intersection. And I, again, expect that we'd be taking a look at that as a part of any redevelopment or development opportunity at the Venture Lane site.
Julie?
Oh, go ahead.
I, oh, I guess we're still, I didn't want you to move on to the next section before I got my comment in, but I just wanted to say that I really support this idea of this flex service, whether that will be a new zone that's created or not. But I think today is a prime example of the type of use that fits, that needs that sort of category. And I think this area in particular also has a lot of examples of uses that are, they're quasi-retail, quasi-industrial, but I also see this area having potential for residential down the road as well. So I just wanted to make that comment. I like the flex service a lot.
Thank you. Speaking a little bit more to the graphic here of the improvement plan, you can see two areas outlined in yellow. One is that Venture Lane site, because that is an immediate development opportunity site that has been identified. The second is the opportunity site that is more within the Mitchell Road frontage area. And what the plan discusses there is due to its visibility and its access, its proximity to the golf course and other residential uses, that if redevelopment were to occur on that site, that that may be a prime opportunity to provide for additional residential needs in order to accommodate the growth of the community while also possibly providing some first-floor retail. Again, not to compete with the other commercial areas, but just to provide the supporting neighborhood services that those residents or Martin Blue or further to the west may be looking for. So I wanted to make sure and touch on that. So as we talk about these special area studies, sometimes, even for those of us who work close to it every day, certainly for those of us who maybe don't work with it quite as often, sometimes it's hard to visualize what the development could look like. So we worked with the consultant to go the extra step of putting together some, kind of some modeling of what development could look like on these parcels. It's by no means a mandate of this is what we're going to see, but sometimes it's helpful to show the development community of what the property can be and what it can accommodate, what it would look like with some massing and some scale on it in order to put a little graphic to the words that explain what we're looking for. So these graphics are also included within the special area study as well. Again, not as a mandate, but to paint a picture of opportunity for what could happen on these properties. Any questions on this one before we move to the second area? Anne?
I just have one reaction, which is simply that I've realized for quite some time that there is a lot of housing, multi-family housing, apartments of all kinds and sizes and so forth up in that part of the city. So I guess I just am underscoring what you just said a few minutes ago about trying to have things close at hand to that need too, which I think you were saying you were trying to look at when you were putting the draft together. And I don't know where I'd go any further with that, other than I think it is a value that I can see too, and the flex approach is maybe the one that works. And if the staff is cognizant, obviously, of what we're all looking at here at this point in time, you know, trying to move it, move development to consider some of those kinds of sites, obviously is important too, so that's all.
Are there any influences that we should know about or haven't been discussed in terms of the adjacencies? The adjacencies to the northwest with single-family residential, has there been any pushback or complaints about any of the uses on this side of the trail that would limit maybe noise or anything else that maybe we're thinking of that could happen?
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, as a part of the overall Aspire process, there was outreach done to all of the property owners within the special area studies. There was also some outreach to property owners beyond that, beyond the trail, if you will, to reach some of those residential. I can't speak off the top of my head exactly how far that went in, but there was some outreach that was done. There was some discussion through the focus groups about just making sure that there weren't negative impacts, but when you're looking at the distances between the trail and some of those uses and knowing that, you know, this isn't an area where the city is promoting heavy industrial types of uses, we don't get complaints with regard to the uses that are there. So the overall purpose here is not to necessarily completely switch uses, but how do we promote the uses that are there in a conforming manner and look at redevelopment opportunities should they present themselves? So we don't really routinely get questions or comments about the businesses that exist there today.
Okay. And then a similar question for the businesses on the south side of five, 212. There are some auto repair shops there also, and just in terms of that relationship of being either nicely co-dependent on each other or symbiotic almost, is there any reason why they would be concerned about a change in zoning on this side of the highway?
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, at this point, we're not necessarily, you know, we're not debating a change in zoning. We're talking about creating a land use category that outlines what it is we're looking for. A further step down the road may be to create a zoning district specific to that and if and when that occurs. Of course, they'll be noticed, sent out to property owners, and then we'll know more specifically what we're talking about, building height types of uses, those types of things. It's pretty high-level at this point, and sometimes that's a little challenging to wrap your head around when you don't have the specifics of those performance standards and uses.
Right.
But certainly that outreach would occur through that process.
Okay, all right.
Julie, a question. That parcel where Venture Lane is, has the city given any consideration to putting a solar farm in there?
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, I'll let Mr. Lindahl speak to that in more detail, but what I can tell you is that the RFP that's going out at the end of the month, I believe, end of August, talks about a workforce, housing, and innovation center. So while sustainability is a priority for the community and with any development project that comes forward, as you know, we're focusing on what sustainability features are being provided in there and how can we improve sustainability overall. But the overall look at the Venture Lane property is how to integrate workforce housing, maybe some co-location workspace that also incorporates a tap room or a coffee shop, some other type of use or uses that are synergistic to those types of independent or entrepreneur-type of working spaces within that area.
I just wanted to make a comment, actually Commissioner Farr, about the neighborhood to the northwest. I live in that direction neighborhood, so there's that street that kind of runs all the way along there, and I live right there. And to, I'm not sure exactly where you're going with your points of concern, but just to help explain the neighborhood, that trail that goes along there is actually maybe 20 feet higher than a lot of the surrounding land, because I think it's this old railroad that is very, you know, smooth. So that's high up and actually provides a barrier between that neighborhood and everything behind. So for me, just being, you know, less than 100 yards maybe from that area, I wouldn't know if there's even a very noxious industrial use. I don't think that actually would impact that neighborhood at all, being from there. You know, that, what's it called, a transfer station, the substation. You know, I was initially concerned being so close to one, but you don't even remotely aren't affected by it because of that huge divide with that trail being so high. So I think that that area is very independent from that neighborhood, even though it's right there.
Appreciate that perspective very much. And I can observe that, even though, when you look at the map of Eden Prairie, this property is maybe not centrally located in Eden Prairie, but it's certainly not on an edge. For everybody to the west coming in on 212, there aren't very many property, properties along this easternmost trek in from Chaska that are visible from the public way until you get to the site. The highway seems to have been cut kind of low, and Miller Park is shielded and the residential on the south is shielded. So I think when you come around that last corner, this is probably one of the very first sites where development is visible to people entering Eden Prairie, and as such is somewhat of a gateway feeling.
And just to kind of frame up that Venture Lane property that we're talking about a bit, it's roughly about five acres, but because Mindot wants to retain some of that right-of-way for its own purposes, about four acres would become available to the city to address through the RFP process. So if you don't have any more questions, we'll move on to the second area that we looked at in the special study areas. And the second one was the crosstown industrial area. And while this one isn't necessarily going through those same transformational changes or new uses being introduced, it is an area that, you know, developed quite some time ago, and it is very secluded, so I think it's just one of those areas, it's operated on their own, on its own. It hasn't really pressed for any immediate attention, but with Aspire, the city wanted to look at, well, if redevelopment came knocking on our door, what would we tell developers that we want to be here? So this area is just south of Highway 62, right along Carlson Drive and Industrial Drive. So the asphalt plant is within that area. If you've driven down in there, that might help provide a little context. So much like the Martin Drive area, this study area was broken down into three distinct functional areas. So the first one is the northwest triangle, which is that area that largely fronts on West 62nd and is the westernmost part of the area. And it's largely commercial service and the Southwest Transit facility. They have their garage up there as well. The middle area, which is shown in the purple, along Industrial Drive, is really where those heavy industrial uses are. The asphalt plant, other industry, very heavy industrial uses that we really don't see in other parts of the community. This is really where we see the I-general zoning district really come to life and operate every day. And then the last area is that area that's along Carlson Drive that really operates largely as office and light manufacturing. This area is more akin to the uses we see in the golden triangle, but maybe not to that same level. So when you look at this concentration of uses in a small area and with its seclusion, again, the city wanted to take a look at what can we do either to promote change, if that's likely, or in the event that change comes looking for us, what do we want it to be? And then how can we help these businesses to thrive and become better versions of themselves that more closely conform to city code? Because as you drive down in this area, it, as I said, is very secluded, so has functioned kind of on its own for a while. You'll see some issues going on out there that certainly are not code compliant, so what can we do to help improve the look and feel of that area? So again, looking at those key considerations, the market realities of the site. So clearly, there's a need and a benefit for these types of businesses. Those heavy industrial uses certainly can be difficult to locate within a community. I think we can all picture a community that we've driven through or know of where those uses are front and center and they're very visible. We're very fortunate as a community, this area is secluded. You don't know that those areas exist unless you drive down there looking for them. So they are very, very buffered and isolated, which we'll talk about in a couple points down. But then also the necessity for those types of uses, they do add a value to the community, but as a community, we want to look at prioritizing actions to improve them. So while some of the users out there have been there for quite some time, they've evolved as market has evolved, we want to make sure that we have an opportunity to work with them, as I've said earlier, to bring them as close into conformance as possible. When we're looking at the overall site, much like the Martin Drive area and multiple parcels in a small area, any redevelopment largely is going to require parcel assembly. So that can be a challenge to that transitional, overall, you know, big transformational change. Because without those properties transitioning at the same time or in a very sequential manner, redevelopment becomes challenging if it happens piece by piece, because those parcels are small. You don't get that big wow type of change if you're doing it a little bit at a time. So the parcel assembly possibly can be a limitation, as well as just some of the natural barriers that exist out there with the trail and the roadway connections that exist as well. So some of the improvement recommendations that you can see in the graphic, again, talking about zoning flexibility. Many of these properties are zoned I-General, which allows for outdoor storage, but some of them are zoned I-2, which does not, but because of the feel of the neighborhood and people next door doing it, some outdoor storage has occurred over time. So what can we do to address that or address lot sizes or other performance standards that might not make sense in this area, but they do in other areas? Again, looking at connectivity, sidewalks, pedestrian crossings, trail connections, this is an employment area. There are folks out here that are working in offices or at the plant that want to get out and recreate or sit outside and eat their lunch. What opportunities are we and can we provide for them? There's also the trail that runs through this area. For those of you who are avid bikers, I'm sure you're on that trail quite often, so there's an opportunity possibly to improve the trailhead there and make some more connections to that trail from some of those existing businesses.
Sorry, Julie, can I interrupt right there?
Yep.
Is the trail along that line the only, what I'll call a barrier, where all the property lines are? In other words, is it within our power to talk to the jurisdiction who has control over that alignment? If we were to shift that trail over to the train tracks or east or west and therefore create larger parcel opportunities, would that be beneficial? That was a loaded question. Everything is sliced up, and if we remove just one of those slices by shifting it left or right, would that allow more opportunities for redevelopment?
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, I defer to Mr. Born, if he has any experience or if there have ever been any kind of... or if there have ever been any conversations about that.
Mr. Chair members of the commission, in talking with Three Rivers, basically, the only thing that we've heard from them is maybe the possibility of paving that trail. They haven't said anything about shifting or anything like that. And knowing that trail also runs on an old railroad line bed, that it's, you know, it's a pretty good location for it right now. But I guess that's probably a conversation we could have with them to see if it could be shifted or if a development comes in or a possible parcel combination. I think they'd probably be at least open to hearing us out.
So some of the other-
I'm sorry, Julie, could you define the trailhead? Where does the trailhead start? Right after 62?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, there isn't a significant trailhead out there right now, to the best of my understanding. Oh, Matt's-
Mr. Chair members of the commission, really, the only trailhead is right on Eden Vale Boulevard, where it crosses that road is kind of a main access point for a lot of people in the neighborhood to to access that trail right in this location.
So were there any discussions about, because the trail goes up, and you got to go up across the bridge and then back onto the trail? Is there any discussions about improving that?
As I said before, the only real discussions we've had with Three Rivers is paving it. So that's something we could follow up with, though.
Thanks.
One of the other recommendations that came out of the improvement plan is screening to improve appearance from Highway 62. So for instance, that's specifically speaking about this area right up in here. There are some businesses that currently have a fair amount of outdoor storage, so some screening could really benefit in that location, because as you drive by, that's really the only vantage point where you can really kind of sneak a look down south into that area. So some screening certainly would be beneficial. The, much like the Martin Drive site, you'll see two properties kind of highlighted in yellow. These are the opportunity sites for redevelopment. The first one is just south of the southwest transit facility. That is an MPCA site that does have, is in need of some remediation. So the plan talks about the city working with the PCA to understand what remediation would be necessary in order to allow for further development or expansion within that area. The second yellow area is along Carlson Drive. This is the area that was most likely identified for some type of redevelopment in the future based on age of buildings, parcel size, those types of types of things that would promote assembly. And in the event that that were to redevelop, it should, it was recommended to develop more as a business park type of office flex type of area similar to that, what you see in the GTA. Now, obviously, the the big user in the area is the plant, kind of smack dab in the middle. And while we don't anticipate that that use would be relocated in the short term, again, we want to be prepared that if opportunity came knocking and somebody said, well, we are going to relocate, and what can we do with this property? The plan does propose that upon that redevelopment, this area is ideally situated for more of a business park type of campus, given its proximity to the trail, its seclusion and isolation that really kind of promotes the heavy industrial use would also lend itself well to a business park type of use. So with the adoption potentially of Aspire in this language, that would give direction to the development community of what the city is looking for in the event that redevelopment happens over time, though it though it is not anticipated at this point. We didn't want to leave that unsaid through this process. And then, you know, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. And after Mr. Lindahl gives his discussion on the economic competitiveness chapter, in a couple of weeks, we'll be back in front of you talking about land use and housing.
I'm going to sit so I can read my presentation. Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission, thank you for having me tonight.
Good evening.
I'm going to do a pretty quick overview of the economic competitive chapter, my favorite chapter of the comprehensive plan. So a participant at one of the focus group meetings, I think, hit it on the head in terms of the importance of economic competitiveness. And that's, you know, to maintain a city that attracts businesses and provides quality services in an environment where people want to work, live, and play. It's an important part of our our comprehensive plan. So the the four sections I'll go over fairly quickly are our goals, objectives, and strategies, economic drivers, opportunity markets, business development, and growth strategies. So the first goal is to maintain and grow Eden Prairie's diverse economy by retaining and attracting businesses. The objectives are facilitate business growth and attract new businesses, ensure adequate workforce housing, support business efforts to find and retain qualified workers. Strategies include streamline regulations, partner with local and state agencies to provide financing, which we we do quite a bit of, help keep property taxes down, provide co-location or shared workspaces. We hit on that a little bit with the Venture Lane conversation, and that is one of our goals, is to try to get that type of use into that development, promote a mix of land uses that provide different space opportunities for businesses, implement strategies identified in the housing chapter, establish and maintain regular lines of communication with local businesses, and work with the chamber, Eden Prairie Chamber, state agencies, and education institutions on workforce development initiatives. And I will say that is the hot topic right now. In fact, a longtime committee that I've been on for years at the chamber changed its name from business development to workforce development issues. So we're doing what we can to try to facilitate businesses' need for for workers. Second goal, increase Eden Prairie's competitive advantage in the region, provide adequate transportation infrastructure to increase mobility as a primary objective, encourage unique attractive destinations, create a better sense of community. You know, that third bullet, that's something that has emerged, I think, at a number of our focus group meetings. Eden Prairie may be needing more destinations to try to attract people. I mean, obviously, our parks are fantastic, and I'd say our shopping is good, too. But if we have an opportunity to find a use that would, entertainment use, whatever, that would help bring people to town, I think we should be open to that. Some of the strategies, support construction of the Southwest Light Rail, obviously, work with Southwest Transit for the last half-mile service from transit stops. A lot of conversations around that particular issue, too. We know we're going to have a lot of people reverse commuting from Minneapolis once they get off, let's say, in the middle of the golden triangle. If they're fortunate enough to work at Blue Stem or somewhere else within a five-minute walk distance, that's great. But if not, they're probably going to have to get on some kind of a shuttle to get to their place of work. So that'll be an important additional service. Work with property owners to provide trails and safe crossings, facilitate approval of taprooms and tasting rooms in commercial areas. We've had at least two swing and misses on taproom so far in Eden Prairie. I've had a couple of different groups that have had very serious intentions of building a taproom in Eden Prairie. You know, their biggest challenge is finding the right piece of real estate. Location is really important, and then also just the economics of a lease deal that makes sense for a small startup. The Venture Lane development, we're really going to try to get a taproom as part of that development if we can. We talk about synergistic uses. I think if you have a co-location shared workspace that has a lot of, let's say, entrepreneurs and startup-type companies to start out with a little coffee in the morning, go to your co-location space and end up at a taproom next door, and maybe open all the doors, you could have a large meeting type of facility. So I've I've thrown that idea out to several developers, and they think it's really an interesting concept. I think the challenge might be, at the end of the day, with new construction is, again, the economics, the kind of rents that are going to be required in order to support the that development are going to be fairly high. So the city will, you know, we may look at what we can do to help bridge any gaps that there might be in the economics to make that happen. Facilitate development of a full-service hybrid hotel. This is another issue that's been kind of floating around Eden Prairie for really about 30 years. We don't have a full-service hotel in Eden Prairie. Some of you may recall that we actually hired a consultant to do a feasibility study back in 2014 to kind of look, drill down a little deeper as to why we don't have one. And we're a little bit of a tweener market here. And, you know, I'm not sure we can get the kind of rents that are needed to support that. But what they said, the recommendation that came out of that study was a hybrid hotel that maybe has some services, you know, higher room rates, higher level of finish, but maybe not a restaurant, but some meeting space, which I think is the important thing for Eden Prairie. You know, I think, as you know, many of our larger events now, we have to go to other communities to do anything over about a 300-seater. So that continues to be a priority, and obviously, that's a key strategy in this particular goal. Facilitate walkable mixed-use development in the town center, TOD in mixed-use areas. Ensure industrial office and commercial properties exhibit the character of Eden Prairie through appropriate site design, building design, and landscaping.
Sorry, can I ask you a question? Just when you're talking about ideas of helping small business startups, are you are you thinking about, like, economic development loans or from the city or grants of some sort?
Probably not. You know, the state agencies right now, I think, provide some funding programs for small business, there's SBA loans. But I I'm not sure the city council has the appetite to actually provide direct funding to startups. But they were, we just presented this idea to them last Tuesday, the Venture Lane concept, and they're really excited about it. They're they're excited about trying to create a place where small business and entrepreneurs would be supported. And again, to try to make that happen, I mean, the one thing I could say is that an appraisal has been completed on the property, and it's based on industrial zoning. You know, it's very likely that we're going to be able to sell it for more than what we buy it for, and maybe that difference could be rolled back into the development to try to make, you know, to get the types of uses that we want in there.
Thank you.
Third goal is to create a better sense of community. Key objective there is to improve awareness of Eden Prairie's locale and attractions. Strategies include create unique city entry monument signs at key locations, continue branding bridges and water towers, support and expand destination uses, keep marketing and improve exposure of the strong Eden Prairie brand, and facilitate community events. And I've got a picture, I think it was from last winter, but that's the entry monument sign at Anderson Lakes Parkway and 169. And there's another one going up on 494 as you come into town from the east. That'll be the next sign, kind of by the Vikings there. Okay, the next section is opportunity markets. So identify opportunity markets where the city can invest and grow its existing economic advantage. And there's kind of a long list of different kind of market areas, the TOD areas, the major center area, the town center, Eden Prairie Center, general commercial areas, the industrial flex tech areas, golden triangle, Martin Drive, general industrial areas, crosstown office clusters. There's really a lot of opportunity market areas in Eden Prairie, which I think is one of the reasons why we have a very strong economy. Third section is business development. Strengthen local businesses through retention, expansion, and encouraging new business development to secure a strong and diverse tax base. And engagement and outreach is kind of a key activity there, continue business meet-and-greets. We've been doing this program since, I think, about 2003. We try to do about 20 meetings a year, the mayor and the city manager and I. And I think we're close to about 400 meetings. So we've done a lot, and most businesses seem to really appreciate it, just, just, you know, the outreach, coming out, saying hi, thanks for being in Eden Prairie. Do you have any observations about Eden Prairie, good or bad? Let us know. They usually do. So we'll keep that up for sure. Continue to work closely with the Eden Prairie Chamber of Commerce. I think we have a very good relationship with the chamber. Personally, I'm very active there and serve on a couple of different committees, and we'll continue to do that. Continue with the business surveys and Realtor forums. Every three years, we do a business survey, and we're on that third year. So towards the end of this year, we'll be doing, I think this will be our fifth business survey. It's a statistically valid survey that we we bring a consultant in to help us with. So, yeah, we'll be doing that again. And that's actually a good communication tool as well. Realtor forums, we've been doing those now for about four or five years. We try to do that every other year, and those have been wildly successful. Obviously, you can get credit, continuing ed credits, so we get a good crowd that way. But we also do bus tours, and we take about 80 Realtors around Eden Prairie and kind of show them what's happening, all the latest, greatest projects and different things happening, and that's been well received. Different funding tools that are out there that we'll continue to look at and use as needed, Tax Increment Financing, Economic Development Fund, Minnesota Investment Fund, Minnesota Job Creation Fund. Those are the kind of the two key programs that are available through the Department of Employment and Economic Development. Open to Business Initiative, Pace Financing, which is to help finance solar and sustainability improvements to buildings through an assessment program. And actually, the St. Paul Port Authority is is provides the funding for any project throughout the Twin Cities, so it's kind of a neat deal. And the Economic Development Infrastructure Fund, which is also a DED program. Also under business development, workforce development, routine communication with local employers, DED, Greater MSP, the Chamber of Commerce. Pursue efforts to enhance Eden Prairie's workforce through job training programs and partnerships with local schools. We're doing some of that now. A great program that's kind of emerged out of the Chamber of Commerce is an annual career expo at the Eden Prairie High School, where we have up to about 50 different businesses that come and share information about their industries. It's not a job fair. It's really to get in front of the high school kids and just kind of share what it would be like to have a career in that particular industry. And again, wildly successful. I think, Pat, we probably have, what, six, 700 kids that come through? Eight hundred, yeah. So it's been very great. That's one example of one of the things we've been doing to help the workforce area, kind of get into kids' minds early, or at least expose them to possibilities of what they could do with their careers or and with their educations. And by the way, we also really encourage job shadowing from that. And personally, I've done, I think, three or four job shadows as a result of being at that event, so that's been kind of fun. Continue to develop and foster relationships with educational institutions and local businesses, such as Hennepin Technical College, to support and grow the community's employment base. One of the things that Pat McQueen, the president of the chamber, and I will be doing with the gentleman at HTC that runs their workforce training program is to go out and visit some maker space, makerspaces around the Twin Cities. That's another use that we've also talked about would be very synergistic and great within this innovation center concept. So we're going to go out and do a few field trips just to see kind of how these work and whether or not we could ever attract one to Eden Prairie. And again, that's a place where you might have 3D printers, you'd have shop equipment. So if you come up with a design or an idea, or if you're an inventor, you can actually build whatever it is you're, you know, designing right there and then. Plan for employment density. Identify locations of planned employment intensity. Increased employment impacts infrastructure and can increase congestion and demand for retail and restaurant markets. City expects TOD areas to experience redevelopment of high-employment businesses. Prioritize appropriate infrastructure improvements and additional services to serve new business and development. I would say that that is a that is a key focus of economic development in Eden Prairie, is making sure that there's adequate infrastructure to support the growth and redevelopment of Eden Prairie. I've been very involved over the years in, you know, major infrastructure improvements that a lot of times takes 10, 15 years just to cobble together the money to do like a 169, 494 interchange project. But, you know, those projects add capacity to our system and allow the areas like the golden triangle, as they redevelop, to grow at higher densities. So very important. City should prioritize development of future high-employment businesses in these areas, too. So throughout the chapter, I think, pretty much throughout every chapter, we have these sustainability call-outs. And I've listed them here for for the area of economic development. Invest. The Federal Highway Administration has an infrastructure voluntary evaluation sustainability tool that our consultants discovered. It helps transportation agencies assess and enhance sustainability of projects. So we want to encourage the use of those types of tools. Encourage alternative energy. Minnesota Valley and XL are both, they provide power to our residents and businesses. XL Energy provides both our residents and businesses countless incentives, such as energy audits and equipment rebates for the use of alternative energy technologies. And then energy efficiency was the third call-out in the economic competitive chapter. XL Energy currently offers the owners of multifamily buildings incentives for meeting energy efficiency. energy efficiency goals. They also offer owners a free energy audit. And based on electric and natural gas savings a building achieves, owner can be, owners can be rewarded with up to 40% of the improvement cost. So that's kind of quick, but that's kind of the high-level overview of the economic competitive chapter. Any questions?
Paul, I have a question regarding livability and movement. As you probably know, Wazada has been embarking on quite a building boom, and the Promenade is one of them. And what they've done is they've developed those very well-defined pedestrian crossings on Lake Street and keeping the speed limit at 30. In my way of thinking, slower traffic speeds provide a kinder and gentler community. We have speeds on our major roads in Eden Prairie and the commercial districts that I think are too high. And I think it's created a hazard for pedestrians, people particularly with sensory handicaps and motor handicaps. And I'm wondering what the city is planning to do, particularly with the TOD development over by Purgatory Creek, in terms of really defining and enhancing pedestrian crossings and lowering the speed limits at major intersections and on some of the thorough roads.
Sure. Yeah, that actually might be a better question for our city engineer. But probably a bigger challenge area for us is the Eden Prairie Mall with Flying Cloud Drive and Prairie Center Drive, you know, the four-lane divided highway and another four-lane, very busy, I don't know if we call it Prairie Center Drive a major collector or minor arterial rod, but very busy. So, you know, we've talked about bridging or tunnels. You know, I keep areas, and I still think that there's potential for that. They're both kind of controversial, especially the bridges. You know, I I've heard from people that don't necessarily like to look at them, and they do take quite a bit of right-of-way, you know, to be able to ramp up, you know, to get over. But certainly, that would be one possibility. I think there's, there's been good improvements, I think, at the intersections where you can cross as pedestrians. I mean, obviously, now you hear the wait and, you know, and there's getting, they're giving us a little more time to cross. And I think there's more sensitivity to that in areas where there's senior housing. But yes, I think there's absolutely potential for for more improvement to be able to make those crossings safer, more inviting. And yeah, we're working on it. Not an easy solution, especially for the Flying Cloud Drive area.
When was the tunnel constructed under Highway 5 that allowed-
Well, I was with the project, Rod, I would say it was at early 90s. With the-
Are you referring to the tunnel over by, between Dell and-
Right, between Dell and 4.
That was done with the widening of 5, probably out in the mid 90s, probably.
Okay.
Um, sorry? The title of this section being economic competitiveness makes me, you know, visualize it as, you know, something that's measured, you know, whether it be against other cities or or just sort of internal, you know, so could you describe a little bit about how do we measure our economic competitiveness, and how do we know if we're more economically competitive than we used to be, or how we compare to others?
Yeah, that's a great question. I don't think we ever really try to quantify it through any kind of a comparative analysis with other cities. I think we're always keeping an eye on other cities in terms of looking at vacancy rates or the type of developments they may be getting if we're not. I think Eden Prairie tends to be a little bit more focused on just implementing our vision and our plan, which to date has worked pretty well. And it's not, you know, the recipe isn't complicated. I think, you know, if you have a, if you have decent mobility and accessibility, which, by the way, when we do the business surveys, that's like one of the key things that people always bring it as to why they they have their business in Eden Prairie is even though there is congestion out there, they still perceive Eden Prairie to be fairly accessible. But I, you know, that, low crime rate, safe security, our parks and our schools, they all seem to be kind of the main things that we hear from people as to why they they bring their businesses to Eden Prairie and they keep their businesses in Eden Prairie. There's many other things we hear, too, especially through the meet and greets with CEOs. I mean, many of them live here. So, you know, the variety of housing options that they have in Eden Prairie, I think, is attractive. But it's a great question. I mean, I don't know if it's something we'd ever want to try to do where you come up with some kind of a, you know, set of criteria by which we can actually compare ourselves with other cities and how we're performing.
Well, and I'm just, again, I was just curious and thinking out loud here, maybe it's less of a comparison to other cities and more about our, you know, number, our ratio of households to, you know, office and the number of businesses that are here, sort of like specific quantitative things that we can measure so that 20 years from now, we can say this is how this measurement has changed. Just a idea.
Yeah, no, it's great.
Julie, do you have a comment?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, in response to that, the economic competitiveness chapter is one of the new requirements that the Met Council is requiring this time around. So as staff has looked at the materials, I wonder if it isn't more of a, instead of an individual city competitiveness, but competitiveness as a region, because if each city is required to include this type of information in their plan, we'll all learn from each other's and and work a little bit more in concert, build off of that synergy.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Very good.
Thank you.
I believe that was the last 2040 update tonight, and we will move on to members' reports. Any members' reports?
I'd like to report, I'm a little concerned, Commissioner Farr, how you would spend your time if you're king for the day, but.
Well, I just happen to have my list.
All right, continuing business. New business, undertake a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Farr, seconded by Commissioner Higgins. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mission, or meetings adjourned.